Mr Ramsdale, you could ask that as a question. Can I assume, and I will assume for this purpose, that you have all read your papers? So we will not be going through the papers line by line, we will be taking them grouping by grouping, okay? Now, you have before you, when we come to that item, you have before you the total budget for the year ahead. We tonight will only be dealing with the budget as it applies to corporate. So if you ask a question which relates to community, that question will not be taken. If you ask a question that relates to something the executive make a decision on, that question will not be taken. So all we're dealing with tonight, in fact, will be corporate items, okay? So let me start the agenda proper. Minutes of the previous meeting, Fiona.
They've been on the table at the back of the council chamber for your approval.
Are they approved?
No.
Thank you very much indeed. Apologies for absence of substitutes.
Thank you, Chairman. I've had apologies from councillors Paddy Blagdon, Richard Gates, and Brenda Greenslade, and Adrian Waller from the tenants' panel, and councillor Byam is attending as a substitute.
Thank you very much indeed. Welcome councillor Byam. Declarations of interest, do we have any? No? Thank you. Do we have any questions by members of the public?
None, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed. We now move on to item five, which is the forward programme. Now, you have already asked certain things, and just to let you know that we are included in the forward programme for this committee, property asset management strategy, review of housing support services to vulnerable people, the carbon management plan, and the review of corporate health and safety policies. They are not on the agenda for the meeting, none of them are on the agenda for the meeting of the executive that's coming up, but they are being added to the forward programme for us to look at. Is that agreed? Anything else on the forward programme? Yes, councillor Monro?
Thank you, Chair. And I'm not sure whether it's in the remit, but I thought I'd mention it anyway. What to do with the old Farnham tip off Weyden Lane? A special interest group has just been set up by the executive to advise councillor O'Neill, the portfolio holder, and that's going to have its first meeting next week, I understand, and I know Donal wants to get it to the executive in March. So I think perhaps it ought to be on the forward programme, but it may not be strictly this committee, although it is property.
It is this committee, I'm sorry councillor Monro, and I'm really, the executive take too much to themselves sometimes. This committee asked for a formal SIG to be set up because it came to this committee and was an asset of this committee's. I have heard nothing. I am really quite fed up with the fact that you have heard all this, and nobody's bothered to tell the chairman of this committee.
I read the executive papers, Chair.
I haven't had time yet. Yes, deputy leader?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've actually been talking to councillor O'Neill about two hours ago about the very same subject, and he is under instructions to phone you first thing in the morning to discuss it, and to discuss the membership of the SIG as well with you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Leader. You think well on your feet.
If I may come back, it is actually the truth, Madam Chairman, thank you.
It's the sort of thing I would do.
Madam Chairman, she's actually sitting down.
Thank you very much indeed, and thank you very much councillor Monro. We will add that to our work programme. Thank you. I have a recommendation. Anybody else got anything they want to add to this? No? Thank you then. The recommendation is that we consider what it wishes, and we've done that, and Fiona will ensure they are put into the programme. Thank you. Right. Responsive repairs in-depth review final report. Can I just say a very big thank you to councillor Goodridge, who stood in for me while I was recovering from flu? This has been a good piece of work by the Housing Improvement Committee, and I would like to ask on officers' parts and also members' parts, and could I ask Mr Wagstaff, who'd like to take us through this, and what's happened? But well done all.
Thank you very much, Chair. The purpose of this report is to provide the committee with the analysis and evidence to support the ONS Housing Improvement Subcommittee's in-depth review of the housing's responsive repair service. The scope of this review was agreed by this committee on the 23rd of September 2014. The first draft of the report was presented to the subcommittee on the 10th of November 2014. The committee spent a considerable amount of time on the report, there was questions to Mears and questions to Waverley staff as well. So the report was amended in light of members' comments and the discussions that were had, and moreover, the committee identified areas for improvement. So a draft improvement plan was drawn up by Waverley and Mears. The plan was then considered, again in great detail, by the subcommittee on the 12th of January, and the details of the discussion are in the minutes that have been circulated. Again, senior officers from Mears attended, and I think it is to highlight that Mears were committed to this process that was gone through. At the request of the subcommittee, the two plans were asked to be joined together as a joint natural plan, and so the draft of that is in appendix eight. Because of the shortage of time, if people could, sorry, if members could consider this purely as a draft, and really needs to be tidied up by members, by officers. The key areas for improvement that were identified by members and in the discussion is disputed invoices. There was a clear steer from members that this needed to be sorted out, and officers and officers from Mears did go away and did come to a financial settlement on all invoices from previous financial years. So it was really a big piece of baggage that we've able to get rid of, and I think the important thing of this was, we're able to look forward, which is important and to deliver improvements. The other area of improvement was timely submission of invoices. And again, Mears, again, I think through pressure from members, have given a commitment to submit their invoices within 30 days, and have an action plan to actually deliver that. And again, that will be really a great move forward in terms of financial management for the contract. The other key thing that members and tenants that are on the panel was about maximising customer satisfaction. So again, that's within the action plan. I think members were very keen about reimbursing the principle of getting things right first time. That is not only not having complaints, but also there's only one visit where possible, and an operative visits someone home. So again, that's something that we need to focus on in the coming year. The other thing that members really thought was important was identifying and understanding the data that will drive improvements. It's about digging down, finding out where we can actually deliver things and to deliver improvements. And lastly, the other key area was about maximising the use of IT, and again, that's within the plan. So I'd like to thank members for their time and for their expertise. I think their involvement has really moved the contract on and will deliver improvements for our residents. There are three recommendations from the report. Do I need to read them out, or?
No, I'm going to invite members to make comments first, if I may, Mr Wagstaff.
So that's my summary of the report.
Thank you very much indeed. Mr Goodridge, you very kindly chaired the last meeting where we brought all this together. Is there anything you wish to add, or any comments you wish to make?
Nothing too, I mean, I agree entirely with what Hugh Wagstaff has said. I think also on the longer term, that we really need to have a database, which I think both parties combined, to get a database of our housing stock and what is there, in other words, what type of bathroom, what type of kitchen, and so on, so that when repairs are needed for a tap, we know the type of tap that particular property's got, so to make quite sure the operative has got the right equipment in the van. Because there's nothing more infuriating than turning up and finding, oh, it's that sort of tap, sorry, I haven't got one. And making quite sure, which is in part of the action plan, that actually most of the things that operatives will be using are on board their van. So as Wagstaff says, so that one visit should solve the problem, rather than having to go back, and so on. So I, and I think there was willingness on both sides to try and achieve that. And I think, you know, I was pleased that Mears were so open and wishing to work with us for the benefit of our tenants.
Very much indeed. I do so agree with you. I'm just delighted we've been able to sort out the finances of this contract, and I hope the executive will actually acknowledge the work that the officers have done, and members, to get this upfront, so that we know where we're going and the direction we're going in. So thank you all very much. Anybody got any questions on the report? It's a very interesting piece of work, actually. Yes, Mr Ramsdale?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any observations this time. What I wanted to observe was that, having been very vocal at the subcommittee, and given numerous suggestions both to Hugh and to Mears, I'm really pleased that the plan we've got now and the minutes of the meeting together capture all of the suggestions. So, given the short time period that Hughes had, and I know he was also in this chamber till late last night, that's great, well done, thank you.
Thank you. Mr Monro?
Thank you, Chairman. I noticed on page 23 of the report of the subcommittee, we have a budget versus expenditure table, which is quite an amazing table, actually, and we had a variance in the wrong direction of £787,000, i.e. we overspent by that amount. As explained, some of that is due to the timing of invoicing, but some of that was the fact that we didn't more. Have we got the budget under control this year?
I mean, I would say yes, I mean, Graham to confirm, but yes, we have got measures in place, and monthly reports are going to the senior management team to confirm where we are, but Graham perhaps could confirm.
Chairman, yeah, absolutely, it's really significantly improved in this year, the information that we get is accurate and timely, and we've got, and I've got a lot of confidence now in our monitoring. And actually, just to make a point about that figure, Chairman, we did have a corresponding underspend on the capital programmes. I think overall on the housing revenue account, we were okay, but that still doesn't mean that this was good monitoring or good financial management in last year. But just to reassure members of this committee that the overall HRA budget, if you add capital and revenue in 2013-14, was within the budget. But certainly in terms of sticking within the responsive repairs, yes, lots more confidence this year, thank you, Chair.
Well, I think there is a note about it on that page, but I mean, I think we do have to bear in mind that due to the weather we had in 2013-14, council tenants were adversely affected, and that has meant far more responsive repairs were needed due to the adverse weather, and that is not something we can ignore.
No, that's absolutely right, because we talked about this in the subgroup.
Yes.
Yes. Mr Martin?
Thank you. I'm interested in page 21, and then going back to page 15. In page 21, there are repairs by specialist contractors. I note that over a quarter of all of those, namely 432 items, are pest control. Is that, seems to be very high to me. What, is there a greater analysis of that? And also, a substantial number of calls regarding TV and satellite antenna, and on the page 15, I thought that was responsibility of the tenants, or have I misunderstood that?
I think there's been some change. Mr Wagstaff, could you answer those two questions, and then I'll take Mrs Thompson?
But the TV and a satellite will be on blocks of flats, so we do provide communal aerials and TVs on the blocks of flats. I haven't got analysis of the pest control, but that would be a wide range of issues from wasps, nests, bees, and then pests, and I don't think it would be quite rural. But we can, when we have the up-to-date reporting in March, we could have a little bit of analysis on the pest side. But as I say, I think we've got to consider that we are in rural areas as well, and we pick up pests.
So we'll comment on it at the next report. Mrs Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My question is a general one about customer care and feedback, because I think, from my own experience of talking to tenants, the complaints that I've received, or, you know, just heard, about the level of care that they get from operatives from Mears, is that around the job not being finished on time, people not arriving with the right tools, and not having the right skill set. And I can see that we need to capture those occasions when they happen, but the best way, I think, of doing it is for each tenant who has work done on their property to, at a time that suits them, be given a, well, they're given a form at the time, and they send it back in. And so that every single repair that's done in a tenant's home, the tenant provides a feedback form, so that we have an independent, i.e. the tenant's view, for everything that's done, so it doesn't go through a monitoring process, it comes straight back to the officers here at Waverley. Now, I think that's only sensible, that's what happens.
I think we've already agreed that.
And does that happen every time, and is it a standard form? Because I, sorry, but I've missed that then.
It is going to be a standard form, as I understand it, because what was happening, Mears were presenting a piece of paper at the time, and one of the things that we said to Mears as part of this review is, that isn't good enough. We need the tenant to be given a piece of paper and for it to come back here. And last night, we agreed a special tenant number, telephone number.
And Chairman, just to add, that there's variety of routes to getting customer information and feedback on satisfaction levels, and part of our task is to make sure that we cross-reference them, to make sure that the things that we're doing are right. So we have a biannual, I think, in our STAR survey, which is one route for getting customer satisfaction data. We look at the complaints really closely, we undertake separate surveys, we have what they tell the operatives at the time, and we make sure that we do telephone surveys as well, soon after work is completed, on a sample basis, just to double-check that as well. And where there's significant variances, then we know we can question the validity of that particular dataset. And this is an issue that we're having, we're continuing to progress with our contractors, to get that absolutely right, and to fine-tune it until we are completely satisfied.
This was one of the reasons we started this in-depth review. It was not only money. Mears' information was different from the information we were gathering, so we need to make sure that the information is similar. Yes?
So at the moment, most of our data is picked up by the PDA, by the operative, and I think that's what perhaps councillor Thompson is saying, is that that is not, that is not good, and that's what the committee confirmed, that they don't trust that data, and that's why we've got to find other methods of collecting the data, for example, doing the surveys that you're suggesting. There hasn't been implemented yet, no?
What we've got here is the plan that we're going to implement as a result of our in-depth review, okay? So if you can take it like that. Wyatt, sorry, Mr Ramsdale?
Thank you, Chair. Just to respond slightly on that in the discussion with Mears, they in part defended not using the piece of paper system, because there's a small percentage of people actually bother to send the piece of paper in, hence the time get the operative to do it at the time. Because that then gets, you know, the threat of the builder being there, which doesn't work. It's a real catch-22 to actually get enough replies in a reliable manner, but it's clearly down on the list of things to do to find a good way of doing it, and as the chairman said, to make sure that what Mears say is the response rate agrees with our independent surveys. Hope that helps.
We are definitely, it's top of our list to work on with everything else that we've got here. Anybody else want to ask questions on the report? Then, in which case, can I thank everybody involved in it, and put the three recommendations, which are on page 14, I think? And we will be getting regular report backs as to how we're doing on this. Notes the report, considers whether there are any further issues, and awaits a final report action plan to be presented in March. Are they agreed? Thank you very much indeed, ladies and gentlemen. If we move on to item eight. Now, just to reiterate, we're going to assume you've read the report, this section is going to be led by, oh, seven, I've missed seven, minutes of the Housing Improvement Subcommittee. Are they agreed? Item eight, financial strategy. We're going to assume you've read the report. This is the total budget, and we will only be taking items relating to corporate, so anything that's executive or community, we will not take or answer questions on, that is for another occasion. And we will deal with it very similar to the way we dealt with last night, where we'll take several members, and then we'll get an answer. All right, it's going to be led by Peter Vickers, so Peter and your team, over to you. Can you make sure you give us the page number and the paragraph number, so we're not all fiddling around? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm going to present, start out by presenting agenda item 8.1, which is the financial strategy from 2015-16 to 2017-18 for the general fund. This follows on, sorry, it's pages 13 to 18. The finance strategy document in front of you follows on from the seminar, the finance seminar held back in September, where we identified that we had a million pound gap for 2015-16, building up to 3.2 by the time we get to 2018-19. To address the million pounds, and also to set the 2015-16 budget, we held Star Chamber sessions as our methodology to go through the budget, and these sessions were held with each head of service to review and plan their service budgets. So the budgets that we're presenting tonight are in the context of the outcome of the Star Chamber process. The finance strategy on pages 13 to 17 sum up the assumptions that underpin the overall general fund budget that we are presenting. So the report logically talks you through all the key aspects of what the really big issues are that we've dealt with in terms of setting the budget. The detailed budgets are given in the annexes to the report, along with the fees and charges, schedules that underpin the income assumptions and the budgets. Mr Brian Long, who's our chief accountant, I'm sure everybody's familiar with Brian, understatement, will present the actual data and draw out some of the key parts of the detail in the budget for us. The key thing to take from this particular report is the fact that we do have a balanced general fund budget, considering for next year, considering we started out the budget process with a million pound gap for next year. So I'll hand over to Brian, just to give you some detail.
Okay, thank you, Peter, and thank you, Chairman. So I thought, Chairman, rather than to, in order to avoid repeating what Peter has just been through, perhaps if I told the budget story briefly in my own words, and then moved on to the annexes, the budget story, of course, is in the report at page 13, but basically, we started with what seems to be a traditional million pound budget shortfall, which was moving on from the current year's budget, and that shortfall basically arises from the loss of the government grant, that's now up to four million pounds, and supporting people grant, plus the fact that, of course, we have to deal with inflation every year, so the government grant should ideally be going up to cover inflation. However, there was some good news that we've already allowed for in the budget, which in particular is additional income, in particular planning income, and then investor save schemes are delivering savings and additional income, for example, the leisure centres and energy efficiency measures, and the rental of the office space, and other investor save schemes. And council tax base has grown, and collection fund surplus has improved, so there's 170,000 good news built into the budget because of those items. So the proposals that therefore are in the papers, that will ultimately be presented to council, are for a council tax freeze once again, but that has good news from the government in terms of a council tax freeze grant, which this year will be ninety-two thousand pound, which again has been allowed for in the figures already. The Star Chamber proposals that Peter's referred to are on the reduction list and the growth list on the annexes tonight, which I'll mention the annex number specifically in a minute, but the interesting thing this year is the reduction list is 298,000, and the growth list is actually 391,000. So that's quite a change from previous years. And finally, moving on to fees and charges, the proposals are either to hold fees and charges again, in particular notably car park charges, and where increases are proposed, then the proposals are for increases below 2%. So if I may then move on to the annexes, which I think are most conveniently listed on page 14 of the report at paragraph two, and briefly explain what the annexes are about. The first three annexes are really for information, and they, for page 14, the annexes are listed on paragraph two at the top, and annex one, it happens to be page number 19, annex two is page number 21, and annex three is page number 23, but I haven't got anything to add to those, they're basically, they're basically listing what I've just explained as part of the overview. But then annex four is for specific comment by this committee, which is the Star Chamber proposed reductions, which, this is page 25, Chairman, sorry, which is 298,000 total. The relevant ONS committee is identified, of course, on the individual sheets.
Questions on the detail within that which are contained in later pages? Is, okay, the first one is on page 27 then, information technology. I see that the department are asked to save fifteen thousand pounds on software maintenance and equipment. What practical effect will that have on service delivery? And on the next page, page 28, compensatory grants and town and parish grants, there's a saving of sixteen thousand five hundred. What will be the practical effect of that as well?
I would suggest, Chairman, on the first one, that properly Roger stands in, is the, clearly the impact assessment is none, which I can repeat, but Roger can probably expand on the none.
Thank you, Chairman. With regard to the impact on the IT service, what we've looked at is our maintenance and licensing contracts, and we've been doing this for a number of years, and we've done a lot of savings in the past. This year, it's not as significant a saving as we've had in previous years, but it's about looking at our licences and making sure that we don't have licences that we don't need, and this is a reflection really of that. So in terms of impact, no impact.
Chairman, can I, can I take that one? Please. Chairman, Waverley's had a policy for a few years now of gradually reducing the compensatory grants to those parish councils that receive it at 10% a year. It does have an impact, we recognise that, and members recognise that on parish councils. It does have an impact, we recognize that, and members recognize that on parish councils' budgets. We notify parish councils, well, in about November, December time, to alert them to the fact that members will probably consider that as we go through the budget process in the light of a significant grant reduction ourselves. But that's really to give parish councils as much time as possible to plan when they're setting their own budgets. But we do recognize it has an impact. But in the face of significant grant cuts ourselves, it's become a policy that has continued through the years. Now, clearly, members can comment on that and ultimately change that at Executive Council if they wish. With regards to the second point on page twenty-eight, Chairman, the town and parish grant for council tax support, this goes back to when the government made changes in the welfare reform framework, when council tax benefit was replaced by a council tax support, which is set locally. And they changed the whole funding arrangement. And in the first year of that, which was thirteen-fourteen, they gave Waverley and all districts and boroughs a grant allocation to help towns and parish councils through the transition because it had an impact on their council tax base. In year two, which is the current year, the government stopped identifying that within our grant and, of course, significantly reduced our grant in both fourteen-fifteen and fifteen-sixteen. So, the fifteen percent reduction, Chairman, is a proposal to reduce that amount in line with what we thought our overall government grant reduction would have been. As it happens, it was nearer thirty percent. But we notified towns and parish councils before Christmas of that potential reduction as well. And so, that stands within the budget proposals, ready to go through to the Executive and Council. Again, there's an impact on town and parish councils' finances. Because of the positive impact on council tax base that Peter referred to earlier or Brian referred to earlier, we know, we do know that that's helped mitigate that impact for town and parish councils. So, hopefully, you know, there is some, you know, some help coming in the form of an increased council tax base, which helps keep increases in the town and parish council tax bandy at a manageable level. Yes, Chairman, we notified them before, I think it was right at the end of November, actually. And most towns and parishes have set their budget now on the basis of these reductions.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? councillor Ellis?
Thank you, Chairman. Could I come back to the compensatory grants? Obviously, Granley Lee, I believe, gets the largest compensatory grant amongst all the other towns and villages. I suppose I'm concerned, from the parish council point of view, that a ten percent reduction year on, year on, year. Perhaps are we leading ultimately towards a time when the compensatory grant goes the same way as we are expecting the revenue support grant for the borough to go? And perhaps if we are heading down that particular road, would Waverley maybe consider taking over the recreation facilities that we have to maintain at increasing cost, but with a decreasing compensatory grant? Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Ellis. I don't think that is an issue for this particular item on the agenda, but I'm sure officers have taken note. Mr Martin?
Thank you. Could I go back a little to the new homes bonus on page fourteen? And I'm glad to see that we're not busy just spending it in our general budget. But the amount for twenty-fifteen-sixteen, as identified on page nineteen, is one-six-six-two. And there is a transfer to the Revenue Reserve Fund. Where can I see the other side of that? And presumably now that Revenue Reserve Fund with the new homes bonus must be worth, or will be worth by then twenty-fifteen-sixteen, four million or so. How much of that is spent and where's the analysis of the expenditure that does take place in the investor save? I don't, maybe I've missed it in this analysis.
Chairman, we haven't put a separate analysis in here and I can certainly get the team to pull those figures together because we have spent new homes bonus over the last few years on a variety of things. Peter alluded to the investment in leisure centres and also in developing our waste collection service. So, we've used new homes bonus to provide a capital injection in order to generate a revenue saving. And it's been very effective in that. So, we can easily pull those together since the start of new homes bonus to show to the committee. I just don't have that analysis in that form right now, Chairman. The first part of the question, where's the other side? On line seventeen, on the same statement on page nineteen, there's a figure in the fifteen-sixteen column of two-nine-six-two-three-sixty. And that is the new homes bonus plus our one-point-three million pounds contribution to capital going off into the Revenue Reserve Fund. So, that's where the other side is.
Thank you. It's just a query, it may be me not being fully aware of it, but I noticed assumptions made when drawing together the budget as outlined on page fourteen, again under new homes bonus. It said considerable uncertainty about the future level of payments. Indeed, whether the scheme will continue beyond the general election, which is a fair enough assessment of risk on that to take. But then I notice under the freeze grant, the government have recently indicated that the freeze grant will be included within baseline figures for future settlements. Do you see where I'm going with this? We haven't, we haven't thought, well, that might change with the new government, but... And we've costed, you know, we've put that back into income.
I do see where you're going and I agree that, I mean, they are different things. But the new homes bonus, the government has indicated it will review it if it returns to government. Certainly, the opposition have also indicated that they'll review it with a view to reducing it significantly. So, whilst there is a threat over that source, our policy of not relying on it to balance our budget is prudent. In terms of the council tax freeze grant, whilst the government say, we will put that into your base, they then reduce our base significantly. So, our fifteen-sixteen grant that we've had from the government, which has been reduced by thirty percent, has got the fourteen-fifteen's grant. So, actually, it would be nice if it increased by that amount, but it's a bit academic because it goes into the pot and then the pot gets slashed by a significant amount. So, we don't rely on it as being new income past the year that we're setting the budget for.
Thank you. On page twenty-eight, we've got cost of collection of council tax, an increase of five pounds per summons, which is going to save us or bring in an income, I suppose, of ten thousand. Do we actually issue two thousand summonses? I mean, that's an awful lot, unless I've misunderstood it, which is probably the case.
The five pound is the increase. The summons cost at the moment is, I think it's eighty pounds, actually, I think the current rate is for a summons. We do issue a lot of summonses in a year, actually, yes. I mean, as soon as somebody's on their council tax has gone past the point of the reminder cycle, then we do issue a summons. They don't always go to court because that often triggers a payment, actually, at that point.
But it's the saving, it's ten thousand in a year. Therefore, the five pounds, it must be two thousand summonses, by just mental arithmetic.
Yes, that's correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, so the next section is the growth list, which begins at page thirty-one. But for this committee, page thirty-two, thirty-three and thirty-five are the relevant pages. Growth, I would just mention growth is a sort of simplified terminology. It's a sort of extra budget. Yes, Chairman. Page thirty-nine, we basically now move on to the detailed service estimates. And the relevant heads of service are in attendance to help answer any questions that might be on the individual sheets. So, the first section is Annex six, page thirty-nine.
If I could ask you at least one question, specifically page forty-one. We've got the sales of the register of electors, so that's about three-quarters of the way down the page. In thirteen-fourteen, we made two-thousand-three-hundred pounds, but we don't seem to be going up from our estimate from fourteen-fifteen. Have we stopped trying to sell them or... I thought this was a good example of the point made by councillor Munro only last night about looking for increases in income.
Yeah, to explain, this is made up of two parts. One is selling the full register to authorised and accredited credit agencies. And there are only a few of those. We used to sell quite a lot of copies of the edited register, the shorter register. But because so many people are opting out of that now, we're down to about fifty percent only on that register. People are tending not to buy it and there's not really much we can do to encourage people to buy it. And the full register, as I say, there's only very few organisations, I think it's about three or four who are authorised by the government to buy that data.
Thank you, Chairman. Taking, for example, page forty-seven, democratic representation, there's a number of areas of costs that have shot up from thirteen-fourteen to fourteen-fifteen. But, and seem to be staying high for fifteen-sixteen. So, for example, line fourteen, where members' travel and subsistence has doubled nearly. Line twenty-four, where subscriptions have gone up from sixteen thousand to twenty-four thousand. Members' conference expenses seem to have come in from a mere thirty-three pounds to two thousand pounds. Surely, we should be able to find cuts in these areas? Do you want me to continue with questions in all of this section? Yes. Page forty-nine. Surely, the licensing service should have an overall break-even situation. I note that the income from other licenses has gone down. Is that the cause of this thirty-one thousand balance? And why is it going down, the income? Turn over the page to legal expenses. Perhaps somebody could explain, where's the actual cost of us hiring the lawyers in there? I can see where the legal fees and charges of fifty-eight thousand pounds were charging out, but where does the time of the lawyer cost come in?
So, if I start with the democratic representation questions on page forty-seven. Partly the, sorry, partly the expectation is that some of these will go up. As I said last night, when we were dealing with the kind of post-election training programme, we do expect members' expenses, training expenses and costs to go up in the following year more than they would, in the same way that the budget for members' training has gone up. So, that would be my answer on that one. Brian, was there anything you wanted to add on that one?
See, on licensing, the first answer on the overall position is that unfortunately, we can't achieve break-even because there are certain costs, in particular enforcement costs, that we're not allowed to recover through the fees. And there's been some case law within the last couple of years on that. So, we can't unfortunately get to the break-even that at one time we were hoping to get to. And then the, on the detail, the, yes, we do, the volumes do change basically. So, the taxi volumes have gone up and therefore incomes gone up, but the other licenses have come in at a lower level. Just to add on that, the licensing committee is actually due to meet, in its own right, scrutinises its own estimates in great detail, which should be towards the end of next week, the meeting of the licensing committee. So, it is looked at extremely closely.
Madam Chairman, I think we would expect those costs to appear elsewhere in the budget. So, where we're asking advice from council, et cetera, that would be paid for out of the individual services budgets where the advice is going towards.
Isn't the recharge to staff accounts, the forty thousand, that's, isn't that the item where our in-house lawyers' fees come out as a contra entry?
That's my understanding is.
Well, I think that was the question.
Oh, sorry, I thought the question related to external legal advice.
No, I think it was where do our own lawyers' fees come out? And I think that's where they come out.
It's charge of services.
Thank you, Chairman. Perhaps somebody could explain what the Community Partnership, bracket CP, is on page fifty-four, the summary for finance, how that appears to be a new item coming in at forty-five thousand pounds? I wonder if I could inquire why bank charges are so high? When we have massive amounts of money invested, we can't be seen as a risk to our bank. So, can we not negotiate lower charges?
Chairman, I'll take that. Taking the first question, the, Chairman, on page fifty-nine, which is support to community organisations, line eight, the forty-five-four-one-oh there in fourteen-fifteen, which was the emergency funding provision, that's rolled in, that's what that figure is appearing fifteen-sixteen. It's just changed its presentation on that page. No, this is support to community organisations. So, the forty-five-four-four-one-oh. Next week, community ONS, members will be considering how the grant is allocated. So, at the moment, the fifteen-sixteen budget doesn't anticipate how that money will be allocated because it hasn't been discussed or agreed yet. And so, that forty-five-four-one-oh is the unallocated equivalent of the figure that appears on page fifty-nine at line eight in the previous year in fourteen-fifteen. It's just rolling the budget forward into fifteen-sixteen. But it's likely to be allocated out to organisations when it's considered next week. Yes, the grants, yes, going out to community organisations. Chairman, shall I pick up at the point on bank charges? Councillor Ramsell's absolutely right, I mean, we do get interest on our investments and that's on page fifty-seven on line eight. I mean, our bank charges, I mean, we, this is for our banking with HSBC. We have many, many thousands of transactions a year coming from direct debit, coming through our credit card system. And we make many thousands of payment transactions and that's what we pay bank... pay bank charges for. And we do test the market every three years and we go out to tender when it's appropriate. And three years ago, we engaged a specialist banking consultant who came in and said that we're getting a good deal from our bank and we wouldn't achieve anything by going to tender, so we extended our HSBC contract.
Thank you. Page fifty-six, line four, back-funded pension contribution, this is one of the very biggest items in the entire budget and is ten to twelve per cent of our total budget. Could you remind me of how long those back-funded pension contributions continue on and whether we're likely to get, whether that's likely to go up or down, or what the current view is, please?
I'll start, Chairman, and Brian can fill in if needs be. But, I mean, this has the name suggested, it's historical payment that we have to make for changes in the pension fund legislation many years ago that left an underfunded element, and that's what we're paying for still now. So this is nothing to do with current staff's pensions, it's a historical plugging a gap in the fund. And certainly the actuary would anticipate this going on for the medium to long term, and we had our review just before Christmas. And I'm not anticipating that amount increasing for another two years, but it will be reviewed at that point, there's a triennial revaluation from the actuary on the fund. If that amount is plugging the gap to the right extent, then that amount will stay the same, but if not, then it will be reviewed, it could go up, it could come down. But you're absolutely right, it's a huge, huge amount, but it is one that we by law have to keep meeting. Chairman, if there are any questions, I think Glenys and Brian are probably best placed if there are any questions.
Thank you, Chairman. Page seventy-one, I wonder if we could have a little explanation on why staff costs have gone up fourfold from thirteen fourteen to fourteen fifteen and fifteen sixteen?
Chairman, I think, blank looks, can we reply to that, please? Because there's a lot of figures in here and we'll need to check out the detail. I mean, it's a, it looks like it's a change in a staff allocation in Hughes' team, but there'll be a reason for that and certainly we can get to the bottom of that and let members know when minutes come round. Certainly, Chairman, yes, yeah.
Not especially, Chairman, other than perhaps in the IT area where there was a movement on the staffing budget, and just to say that that was an additional post that actually is to do with IT training that was added in the previous year, and a SharePoint post as well. So there's a change in staffing establishment that I think perhaps warrants an explanation.
Thank you. Can I just ask whether, we've just done your service plans, everybody's service plans, whether any financial implications in those service plans have been reflected in this budget?
Yes, they have, Chairman. In fact, the Star Chamber meetings that were held with portfolio holders and officers considered the budget proposals alongside service plans, and there's been a reconciliation undertaken since.
Thank you. Yes, Mr Ramsdale?
Thank you, Chairman. Page eighty-two, miscellaneous properties, I wonder if you could explain what's happening, depreciation and impairment, which seems to have gone down from two hundred and seventy-seven thousand to fifty-three to thirty-six. And then on page eighty-five, relating to the service, central accommodation, surely we should be seeking to achieve or aiming for the staff restaurants and the beverage machines to be breaking even or even turning a profit, but they seem to be turning more and more. And perhaps we could also understand what's happening at the locality offices, that seems to be going a bumpy ride up and down.
Chairman, I think Mr Long may pick up the first question and I'll deal with the other two, that's okay.
Right, yes, I mean, I think basically it's a question of what, you know, what income is achievable at the end of the day. So there's no, there's no particular, you know... Sorry, I was talking about the beverage machines, basically. All right, right, yes.
This is about the staff canteen?
Madame Chairman, depreciation, I'll respond to depreciation. The change in depreciation there will be because something changed around the asset base on the asset register. However, in terms of these accounts, depreciation doesn't cost against the bottom line, it reverses out again within our accounting rules. So whilst we're showing it here as a budget, it's not a true money budget, it's not a true cost to Waverley, it reverses out into a reserve on the balance sheet that we can't touch or spend. It's a technical adjustment. Hopefully that's, I can go into more detail outside of the committee.
I understand what depreciation is, I understand how depreciation gets backed out when you're cash accounting, but to have a great big difference like that, there must be something physically different in the number of assets that you're depreciating. And it was that that I was trying to get at, rather than what is this accounting treatment?
Yeah, I apologise, Mr Ramsdale, Councillor Ramsdale, I wasn't questioning your understanding of it. We can get back to in terms of exactly what's changed between the two years, we haven't got that kind of detail to hand.
Sorry, could I add, on thirteen fourteen, if that was part of the question, then there was an exceptional impairment item, looking at the actual, we clearly never estimate or anticipate impairment, so it's something that happens on the actual figures at the end of the year. There were quite a lot of impairments there, sort of primarily caused by the recession effect.
Thank you. Two questions, one on page eighty-three and one on page eighty-eight. Under street furniture, I should know the answer to this question, but can you remind me what that is? Is that street signs and things of that sort?
It's street signs, it's bus shelters, and it's benches and items like that. But it's, street signs is a big element of it.
And on the page eighty-eight, did you, in the IT and line five, particularly line one, there's a hundred thousand or nearly a hundred thousand, ninety thousand increase, did you mention that was an extra employee, did I hear you say? Or what is the reason for that substantial increase?
Two extra employees, Chairman.
Remind me what's that to cover?
I will, yeah. One is a SharePoint person, and the other post was an IT trainer. And in fact, there's a line, I think, for the SharePoint person that appears in the current year's budget as a supplies and services item, so it moved up into staffing.
I shall have to remonstrate with a portfolio holder.
Chairman, could I pick up the two questions from Mr Ramsdale, if I may? They were firstly to do with the staff restaurant, and I think you alluded earlier to service plans, and we have within the service plan for the staff restaurant to have a look at that. The staff restaurant does operate at a deficit, and that's what we'll be looking at in terms of that, so that's something that we're planning for the year ahead. And I think in terms of the beverage machines, they do cover their costs, but I suspect that in the income, it's a net figure on the staff restaurant, but it's lost within that. We don't lose money on beverage machines, so it's just lost within that net position there. And the second point was with regard to the locality office service, and that's really, we only now have one locality office which is staffed, which is at Farnham, and that's where the bulk of the costs come from, and it's the staffing costs relating to Farnham that are in there, the other costs are building-related type costs.
And it's a shared service, Councillor Ramsdale, we only have one Waverley employee in there, undertaking the locality service, and it's shared with a town. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, just one question, and apologies if it was covered at last night's presentation. The observation I just wanted, or question I just wanted to ask, is central office accommodation is obviously a fairly high cost for us. I noticed there's also under the project justification forms, under hundred and twelve, a certain amount of maintenance costs planned for the building over the next few years. I'm just curious whether we do regularly, or do compare from time to time, what the running costs of moving to a different office premises would be and what capital could be released from doing something different with this site. So just to ask whether that is considered on a regular basis.
That's a really good question, and it is something that we are looking at in terms of property strategy, which we will be bringing to you in the next month, I think, or next two months. So it'd be an area that we're looking at, because we are looking at all our assets, and certainly this is a major asset for us, and you will see that coming through there.
Any more questions? No? Then in which case, let's move on to schedule of fees and charges. I think we have very few here, but does somebody want to talk us through the principles? No? Right, okay, any questions, members? So we're all happy with that? Then, yes, Mr Ramsdale?
Page ninety-six, line forty, and I didn't pick this item because of the nature of it, but because of the value, how come the four six nine oh hasn't gone up?
Line forty, sex establishments? Didn't know we had any. Would you like to say that, Mr Taylor?
I will do. Madam Chairman, my understanding is that this is one of the fees and charges that is set by government, I'm looking to Mr Long to confirm that that is the case, but that's my understanding, is that that fee is set for us.
See then, confirm we're done?
So it's not going to go up? Thank you very much, indeed. Anything else on fees and charges? And in case, in which case, I think, we've finished all of that, and we're now on to financial strategy? Have I got one more than this one? No? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr Goodrich?
It's going back to, we didn't talk about pay award, but I mean, just to emphasise...
But it's not for us to talk about it.
I know, but the fact of the matter is, if there's a pay award, it's so far unbudgeted.
It always is at this time of year.
Exactly, and therefore we've got to take that into account.
It gets put in once we've negotiated and decided what it's going to be, so it's always left out of the budget. Okay? Thank you. So are we on to Agenda Item eight point two? Which is Financial Strategy Draft Capital Programme. Who is going to introduce this? Thank you, Mr, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Agenda Item eight point two is the capital strategy, as Madam Chairman says. It's on pages one oh one onwards, it includes the revenue projects for general fund, and it gives information for the next three years on the programme, and it also an indication of where the funding for the capital programme's coming from, there are various sources of funding. The summary begins on page one oh five of the actual programme itself. The report on page one oh one and one oh two just talks you through some of the detail around actually setting the programme itself. Mr Long will actually just describe some of the detail in the capital programme, and then open to questions.
Yes, very, very little to add, just to say on the capital programme, then, the programme as submitted is affordable, particularly a new homes bonus, of course, makes its appearance here, which is where it's being spent, and there's a column indicating what's coming from the new homes bonus, which was mentioned easier, earlier, and the detail is on page one oh six, one oh seven, and one oh eight, indeed, one oh nine, I'm sorry, one oh eight for the capital programme, moving on to revenue schemes at one oh nine.
Thank you, Chairman. Page one oh seven, which is the custom IT and office services, is there a duplication between mobile working solutions that's sort of in the middle of the page and mobile working that is three items up from the bottom of the list?
Chairman, can I take that one? I think that the two items are separate, that the first item is general fund and the second item is the housing revenue account, so that bottom group are actually housing service capital schemes.
At the head of the page, page one oh seven, it does say capital programme, general fund.
Those particular schemes are housing schemes, and they're funded from housing, sorry, but maybe it's not clear from the top, no? But apologise for that, yeah. We should have had a subheading, I think.
Justification forms, and the only forms we have in front of us are forms relating to this committee, not to community or anybody else. So these are projects that are going to be undertaken through this committee.
Chairman, could I just clarify? The justification forms you have there correspond to the annex that you've, that the members have looked at, which is Annex Two on page one oh nine. So they don't add, they just add a bit of detail to the particular schemes on that page, so they're not new schemes.
That, then in which case we'll continue to move on. Housing Revenue Account Business Plan and Revenue Budget, and that's on page one two one. Who is taking us through this? Thank you very much, Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Agenda Item eight point three gives the key assumptions used to set the fifteen sixteen housing revenue account budget. The budget's part of the thirty-year business plan for the housing under self-financing. The budget's part of the thirty-year business plan for the housing under self-financing. The detail is, again, given in the annex, is similar to the way presented in the general fund. Glenys will pope here, and my left will introduce the more detail, the key points of the business plan for this year, this coming year.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd first of all just like to start off by pointing out a drafting error on page one-hundred-and-twenty-two. At paragraph four, the heading is Revenue Budget fourteen-fifteen Draft Revenue Estimates, and to avoid any confusion, it should say fifteen-sixteen Revenue Estimates. We are talking about next year here. And probably two main points I'd like to draw your attention to. At paragraph three on page one-hundred-and-twenty-two, there's a proposal to change the distribution of the investment contributions from the business plan, and there is a proposal for the next two years to transfer the investment contributions all into the New Affordable Homes Reserve, rather than splitting the contributions between the New Affordable Homes Reserve and the Stock Remodeling Reserve, the reason being that the Stock Remodeling Reserve, for the work that is planned at the moment, it is felt that there are ample balances in that reserve already, and we want to direct more funding in the shorter term at new affordable homes. So I think that's the sort of first point to make. And then in terms of the rent increase that's proposed, this is in line with the rent-setting policy that the council agreed three years ago now, after self-financing first came in, and it helps to ensure that there is sufficient money in the business plan to carry out the ambitious plans that this council has for the next few years, both in terms of looking after its existing stock, improving standards for existing tenants, and providing new affordable homes. The detail of the budget proposals are on pages one-thirty-one to one-thirty-seven, and I'm happy to try and take any questions, Madam Chairman.
Chairman, the rent increase of two-point-eight per cent, which I have no problems as a figure, I think I'm right saying you're calculating it to September's RPI plus a half per cent. Is that a consistent policy? Again, I've got no problems with it. So if I were to say, if I was the tenant, I say, well, actually, the RPI is way below two-point-eight per cent, you know, how would you answer that?
If I can just come back, Chairman, that is consistent, it is formula-driven, but it is consistent with the policy we've applied for a number of years, in line with government recommendations, that September RPI is the figure that has driven rent increases under rent restructuring.
Could I come, if that is consistent, say it's September every year, then of course that deals with it. So what you're basically saying, if RPI stays at the current level, I'm not sure what RPI level is actually, but it's quite low, and next September, then our tenants will benefit if we keep the policy...
Yes, that's correct. RPI, I think, is currently down at one-point-three? One-point-six, thank you, Graham, one-point-six, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Chairman, page one-hundred-and-twenty-five, the assumptions. I was interested that the assumption is that we're going to lose two-hundred-and-eighteen housing stock through right-to-buy. I just wondered if that is similar to what we've seen previously, or is that an increase? I can't find it anywhere in the other figures.
Yeah, I mean, that is based on previous sales, so it's around twelve-twelve a year, or less. So that's our projected figure for the rest of the business plan, going over the next thirty-odd years.
Yeah, Chairman, it's an average of eight per year over the remaining years of the business plan.
My apologies for forgetting it was thirty years.
Sorry, I'm not an expert in this area at all, but in that huge capital sum that's sitting about, that we eventually have to pay off, have we started paying any of it off yet? And is that identified? Or are we still receiving interest, a net interest? And can you just take me through where I find all those bits and pieces relating to this enormous capital sum that we took away from the government?
Chairman, we're not yet repaying debt. The first, our debt is made up of a series of loans, and the first one is due to be repaid in two-thousand-seventeen-eighteen. And if you look on page one-twenty-seven, at line fourteen, you will see principal repayments starting in the year, in column three, which is two-thousand-and-seventeen-eighteen.
And the interest we pay, is that line eleven?
The interest that we pay on the debt is showing at line eleven, yes, thank you, yes. Line eleven shows the interest, which of course doesn't change until the two-thousand-and-seventeen-eighteen year, when it starts to go down, because we're starting to repay principal at that point.
Chairman, could I just make a point to that? Because members will remember, under the old negative subsidy system, we were paying about twelve-twelve-and-a-half million pounds across to the government of our rental income. So if you can compare that to the interest and the principal, that's where we've created the headroom to actually invest in our stock in the new build, so that's where the numbers come together. So, you know, we are better off than we were under the old system, mainly because, you know, we were able to secure good deals on the long-term debt, and the way that the council approved the debt to be structured was very sensible, because it enabled us to spend in the first five years, and when we get on to the capital programme in a minute, you know, you'll see that we are actually doing that as well. So putting the principal payments starting at year five, I think it's now really showing to have been a very sensible policy for the council to have taken at the outset.
Yes, Chairman, if I can ask some questions on the detailed points from page one-three-one Page one-three-three, there's a line, continuing professional development, and there's the other people costs and supplies and services, but I don't see anything for continuous professional development, because that seems to be nil, or for other training, and yet I thought this repairs and maintenance area would be a big area for ongoing training of a variety of natures. Turning over the page to page one-three-four, there's a line, former employee costs, which I think I've seen before somewhere, perhaps that could be explained. And then on page one-three-five, the bottom half of the page, we seem to be spending a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand net on waverly families. Perhaps somebody could explain to me what that's about, that needs so much, and indeed an increasing amount of staff cost?
Madam Chairman, thank you very much. The Waverly Families is a team that the council established just over a year ago, which provides intensive support for those families who have got stuck, mainly because they have multiple challenges in their life. They may have a child who's not attending school, they may be in significant debt, they may be at risk of losing their current home, their children may be at risk of being taken into care, and it's providing intensive support to get them back on their feet, and particularly to make sure that those other agencies who should be involved are playing a full and active part. There is a cost to the service, but the benefits that the council gains is that we're able to tackle often quite serious antisocial behaviour on estates, and we're able to avoid other costs that we would incur if those families continued to progress down the path they're going down. And overall, the view is, although we keep it under review, that the council derives significant benefits from the operation of that team.
Time, I mean, it is, we have trialled this, and it's a very good service that we're providing to these families, and they also get a grant from Surrey County Council.
Just to remind, I asked a question about page one-three-three retraining, and page one-three-four, re-former employee costs.
Chairman, if I may, the continuing professional development line on page one-three-three, I think is still there, purely because there were some costs against that in thirteen-fourteen, which at this distance, I honestly can't remember what they were, but it's something that has not continued, it's so that the heading is still there, because we've still got a value for thirteen-fourteen.
Yeah, my point was, don't the people in this area need either training or CPD or something? Because it's a difficult area, I would thought.
Yes, that will all come under, now will all come under corporate costs, because training, the training budget is held centrally, so it will be covered by that. And the other question with regard to former employee costs, yes, you're quite right, you had already seen that on page fifty-six in the general fund estimates in the non-distributed costs budget, and I believe these former employee costs are related to where there have in the past been perhaps early retirements, and the council has paid added years pension benefits. And so the, what you see on page one-hundred-and-thirty-four is the housing element of the cost that's shown in the non-distributed costs budget.
Chairman, those kind of decisions, I mean, they date back ten, twenty, thirty years, yeah. No decisions on those, with those sorts of residual costs have been made, certainly since I've been here, and I'm not even sure you're allowed to do them anymore, but certainly the council hasn't, so these are historical decisions that run their course until that individual passes away.
But now would be inappropriate. Okay? Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Mr Martin, I'm so sorry.
Thank you. We installed solar panels quite a while, a little while ago now. I see two references, one on page one-thirty-one, which is the Appropriations and Energy Saving Initiative of thirty-six thousand pounds, and it's referred to again on page one-thirty-seven as where there's a thirty-six thousand pounds on line three halfway down. Is that the sum total of money which comes into our housing account for solar panels?
Yes, the thirty-six thousand is the value of the roof rentals, yeah.
The rest goes to the tenant, does it, in terms of saved electricity or...?
In terms of reduced heating bills, yes.
But that's the sort of rental which we charge for the thing on the roof, and that's the benefit to the land or to us, in that sense?
Yes, that's correct, that's exactly what it is, yeah.
Chairman, I've got one final thing. You asked me to remind you about this page, on page one-two-nine. So on the growth that was referred to earlier, just to say that since the papers came out, we've been working with Hugh to look at the staffing, Hugh and Damien, and there's a further growth bid for a data analyst post. It fits completely with the work that the subcommittee have been doing, you know, it's going to help us really get into the detail and understand all of the transactions and produce monitoring reports. So there's another line that will appear on this list when it goes through to the executive and then council, which is for a data analyst post.
And I think, Chairman, it's also recognising that there are a significant number of transactions that takes place across housing. It's almost, a fair description would be big data, and it's really important that we have accurate and timely reports, in part to make sure that we can hold our contractors to account, but also to make sure that we're identifying exactly where improvements need to be made, and can monitor the improvements that are taking place.
Annex five, schedule of fees and charges. Would we all agree with that? Right. This is throwing away. Right, Annex five, schedule of fees and charges. Any comments, gentlemen? Thank you. Then we'll move on. I'm now on agenda item eight-point-four, which is Housing Revenue Account Capital Programme. Who's taking us through this?
I will, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
I won't say a huge amount about it. It's a very ambitious capital programme, totaling some twenty-one-and-a-half million pounds next year. It's in three parts. Annex one, on page one-hundred-and-forty-seven, being what we call the core capital programme, which is work to our existing housing stock, and then on page one-hundred-and-forty-nine, Annex two, the proposals for our new affordable homes programme, and on page one-hundred-and-fifty-one, Annex three, the proposals to date for stock remodeling. I think possibly the report covers any detail you may wish to know, but I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions, gentlemen? It's a very ambitious programme. Any comments on it? No? Then in which case, I will take us right the way back to the beginning for item eight, and we have a number of recommendations. If we go to page unnumbered, but it is item eight, Finance Resources Issues. Eight-one, there are three, four recommendations there. Is that agreed? Thank you. Eight-two, there is one recommendation that we note the report and informs the executive. Is that agreed? Thank you. Eight-three, same thing, we're asked to pass comments and observations. Is that agreed? I think we've done that. Eight-four, that corporate comments to the executive, is that agreed? Thank you very much indeed, ladies and gentlemen. We now move on to Treasury Management Framework, which is page one-five-three, item nine. Peter, Mr Vickers?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Treasury Management Framework, this is a detailed strategy and framework that's required by statute and complies with the Code of Practice for Treasury Management, produced by SIPFAR. Each year, we're required to renew and adopt the strategy formally, and the objectives of the strategy are to ensure that we manage the risk around investing surplus cash, and also the risks around borrowing whilst achieving value for money. Part of the strategy is a requirement to report on a quarterly basis on the progress we're making against our strategy, which I believe members here will recall that we do bring quarterly monitoring reports. Members will be aware that, and recall that, the cash balances that we have are increasing, and they're increasing because of the housing revenue account predominantly, and the build-up preempting the capital payouts that we're going to have of some twenty million pounds, which Glenys has alluded to in the Housing Revenue Capital Programme. This is, this build-up previously during the course of this financial year has led to a potential restriction on the headroom that we have within our counterparties, borrowing, well, investing limits, which members have commented upon. well, investing limits, which members have commented upon. So the strategy's taking account of that, and it's been reviewed in light of the pressure on the headroom. The strategy's remaining the same as last year, where the focus is actually to invest predominantly up to six months, and only taking longer-term views where we find there's some really favourable interest rates going in our favour, so that we can balance out our cash requirements. The focus therefore remains the same as last year. There hasn't been any changes economically that require us to review any of the indicators within our strategy. So it predominantly remains the same for the time being, although it does take into account the changes that were required in the previous year that members put forward in changing some of the restrictions within the strategy. The document itself, it consists of four parts. It's a technical document, and there's a lot of quite technical detail involved in this. I'm not about to sit and take us through it, because I would be here for a while. But just the structure of the document itself, it's called a framework, it starts out listing, or just describing what our policy is as an authority. And this policy pretty much follows a national policy that you'll find across all councils, we all adopt pretty much the same, tailored obviously to Waverly. The policy, the main policy is given in annex one, page 157, and the three key principles are focusing upon control of risk, value for money, and just what the objectives overall are in terms of our financing and investing strategy. Annex two is page 159, and this gives you the strategy, whereas annex one was a policy. And this is the longer-term strategy on where we're going with investments and risk, and what our appetite for these areas are. And also on the way we look at borrowing, and assess that as a council to make sure that we're operating within our required limits. The third annex to the document, just to put some structure to this, is our annual investment strategy. Now, this is where a lot of our operational detail is contained in, in terms of our day-to-day treasury management. It walks through the processes that we look at, and also gives us things like the limits that we adhere to for any of the counterparties within the investments that we do. And also lists roles and responsibilities of individuals. Annex four is pretty much, is prudential indicators, it's pretty much a very technical paper. Day-to-day, it doesn't actually mean much in terms of operational treasury management, but it just gives some market indication for anyone reading the strategy outside of Waverly, that allows them to compare us to other authorities in terms of our investing and our cash positions. I don't really intend to say much more than that, but I'm open to questions.
No. Councillor Goodrich.
Would I be right in saying that annex three on page 169 is really where there may be some changes from the previous year? I mean, the policies and the strategies don't change, but potentially annex three does change, and if so, where are the changes? What are the changes on annex three from, say, the equivalent last year?
Chairman, Councillor Goodrich, you're absolutely right, this is the, this is the part of the framework that does move, or can move each year. There aren't any proposed changes in here compared to the previous year, but what happened last year was, the, this committee, and then the executive, proposed that we made some changes to our policy at that time, and we incorporated those. We extended out some of our thresholds, both to help us gain a better return without compromising security, but also to give us the opportunity to invest in property as well. Those changes were suggested by this committee at this time last year, and we incorporated those. And what we found, the reason I took over them was because Peter wasn't here at that time, so he wouldn't have remembered, unfair. And what we found is, over the year, that this particular strategy, annex three, has worked very well for us, it's kept our money safe, it's given us the liquidity we wanted, and also our returns are still comparing favourably with other authorities of our size. So we're not proposing any changes, because we don't feel that they're necessary. Yes, Chairman, yes, that's right. I mean, liquidity is one of our, is one of our core principles of our policy, and the previous report on the agenda, as Peter mentioned, we will need 20 million pounds just to service the capital programme on the housing revenue account, let alone the eight on the general fund. So what we can't do is lock up our money into anything that will restrict us getting our hands on the money to pay these contractors as we go through the year, which is one of the reasons why we go short-term. The other is, of course, you know, there is still some uncertainty in the market, even now, even a few years on, from, you know, the 2008 problems in the banking industry.
Martin?
Thank you. Of course, we do have low interest rate on the 180, what is it, 192 million pounds of debt that we've got. Is that, that is locked in for quite a very long period, isn't it?
Chairman, that's all fixed-rate debt, and fixed-term debt as well. And when we were looking through the business plan just now, the principal repayments start in, what, two or three years' time, and then they start to build over the remaining years of the business plan, and end in about year 28 of the business plan. Now, what we can do is use any opportunities throughout the business plan period to restructure that debt, if the conditions are favourable, particularly if the investment in new homes building or in our own stock is such that it exceeds the amount of cash that the business plan produces, in which case we'd need to reschedule our debt to free up some money so that we can build our capital programme even more. But at the moment, that fixed-term, fixed-rate debt is working well in the business plan, but each year we'll need to come back and have a look at that to make sure it continues to give us enough money to service the capital programme.
My question really was around whether it's right to get to start those repayments, and interest rates today are very low, you can get under 3% stretching out for the next 20 years, or 30 years if we choose to borrow again. We ought to keep a very careful eye on what's happening to the markets, because this historic low interest rate is quite extraordinary. And there may be an opportunity to get an even better deal as we go forward, or if we need to borrow, there may be a business case to be had to borrow yet more in order to build more housing, or to, or whether we could do it at a more commercial level, via some other, I mean, the use of new homes bonus, for instance, to take, to get housing, other housing on a more commercial basis. Is there, is there any opportunity to do that? I'm only thinking in terms of how we could exploit these historic low interest rates.
Chairman, what we can't do, because we've got a legally set cap, is borrow any more on housing revenue account unless the government lifts our cap. Our cap is set just a couple of hundred thousand above our 190 million mark at the moment, so we are restricted on how much, the quantum of borrowing. But what we can do is restructure it and push our repayments back, and potentially make the most of some opportunities to get some favourable restructured rates from borrowing on the housing revenue account. On the general fund side, we can borrow. The prudential borrowing framework enables us to borrow, as long as we can satisfy ourselves and our council that it's prudent to do so, and that we can make the repayments. If we're borrowing to fund commercial activity, we're currently looking at this, there are some restrictions about our ability to do that, and we might have to, if we were going to do that, operate through another vehicle of some sort, so, you know, a specialist company. Now, we've got no plans to do that in the immediate future, but, you know, again, we'll review that each year when we look at our financial strategy on the general fund.
If I could just come back, I just think that with the ability to borrow at very low interest rates, and with the pot of money, the new homes bonus, which may, it may discontinue, but we've got quite a lot of money around, there is a sort of, almost a business opportunity there, to get out and then create a flow of income for the future, which might defray the need for extra council tax rises at some point in the future. I just think we ought to put some thinking into whether we could intelligently use the new homes bonus combined with very low interest rates stretching out over a long period to our own, to our benefit, and to the benefit of our residents.
... all the time, but your points are noted. Anything else? Then, in which case, can I put the recommendation? And that's at the top of an unnumbered page, with the last blue page. The Corporate Overview and Scrutiny endorses the proposed Treasury Management Framework for 2015-16 to the executive. Is that agreed? Thank you. Exclusion of press and public, I have no items that require exclusion. An item 11, I have no issues to be considered in exempt. Ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of quite a long evening, but I thank the officers for their input into this and their help, and for members, it's the second night you've had to do this. And I find it terribly difficult trying to remember what was in the plans we agreed. That's why I asked the question, have you included everything in the budget? So there we are. So thank you all, and safe journey home.